In compliance with NJSA ten dot four, the open public meetings act notice of this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township zoning board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Mr. Book?
Here.
Ms. Fritch?
Here.
Mr. Hurley?
Here.
Mr. Costanzo?
Here.
Mr. Ricardi?
Here.
Mr. Lavaco is either late or absent, and you shall see. Ms. Bradley?
Here.
And Mr. Najarian.
Here. Alright, so today we are going to session with the zoning board.
Executive session.
Executive session. So we have a motion.
I move it.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes. We should talk about that.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Fridge, Mr. Hurley.
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
The Ricardi.
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
Okay, Ryan, we have a question to you in regards to Gertner and Gertner's son. And the way it was documented and sent to us. Does that have any conflict of you?
No, Mr. Chairman, my firm.
To the microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The answer to that is no. Technically, we're the successor firm to Gertner and Gertner. So it would simply be under the same contract. I would have been a new contract with my firm name, but other than that, nothing would change.
Nope.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion for the fashion.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, with that, let's start with the attorney, then I would move that the firm of Gertner Murphy, as now represented by Ryan Murphy, be appointed as attorney for the board.
I mean, the motion.
That was the motion.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Fridge, yeah. Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi.
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes, come on up.
All right.
So I need a motion for the engineer.
As to the engineer, Mr. Chairman, I move that we reappoint Evan Hill of EDH Engineering Services LLC as the board engineer.
Motion and second roll call, please.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Fridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
I'll need a motion on the plan.
Let's go to conflict, yeah.
All right. Mr. Chairman, as to the conflict engineer, which just going down, going down my notes and list here. I move that we appoint Remington and Vernick Engineers as representative, who's been with us, is Ernie Peters to represent us as the conflict engineer.
I don't.
I can word that a little bit better if your concern was to be standard. So it's Ernie Peters of the firm Remington and Vernick to act as our conflict engineer.
Your motion, in a second. Roll call.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Fridge. Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
Next one is the planner, and I move that we appoint Ernie Peters as the Remington and Vernick, of Remington and Vernick Engineers as our planner.
Second.
The motion is there. Roll call, please.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Fridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, I would move that Ernie Peters of Remington and Vernick Engineers act as our traffic engineer.
Motion, in a second.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Fridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
Everybody can cover all the questions. Welcome back. You did a great job. You're well respected in this town and everything. Go along with your diet. Thank you for being here with us.
Resolution.
We need a motion, in a second. We need a motion in second for December 7th of 2022 minutes. Yeah.
Motion.
For the December 7th, 2022 minutes.
Second.
Yeah, motion in second, roll call, please.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Fridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
I still have the vouchers in front of me. Do you have them?
I sent them already to Dawn in an email, but we'll take care of them next time around. It's all right.
We need the vouchers, Mr. Chairman.
Jeff is not here, so.
He's been looking. I didn't want to go in less than these vouchers. All right, we have vouchers. We have two vouchers, and they date in January 4th. One is free. One for $250 and one for $150. So, senior board, I need a motion in a second.
Move to pay both vouchers.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Fridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
So we have two announcements this evening. There are two applications which are being carried. Number six, the Walter Oral Court Minor Site Plan 728-1 Block 22902 Lot 7. This will be carried to a date certain of February 15th, 2023 with no additional notice. So if any member of the public is here for that application, that has been carried. The second application that's being carried is number seven, which is Joseph Urbanowitz. That is variance number 3432 Block 14201 Lot 19. That will be carried and not to a date certain, so that will be noticed when that will come back before the board. So that will require notice, but if anybody's here for that application, that application has also been carried. Mr. Chairman, if I may articulate a motion for an executive session for the board. Whereas the zoning board of the township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJS A 10412, provides that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution. Whereas it is necessary for the zoning board of the township of Jackson to discuss in a session not open to the public matters relating to an item or items authorized by NJSA 10412B. Those matters being a general discussion subject to the attorney-client privilege. Now therefore be it resolved by the zoning board of the township of Jackson to enter executive session for a general discussion subject to attorney-client privilege is anticipated that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination that public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may have someone make a motion on that.
Move to go into executive sessions.
We got a motion.
Book.
Yes.
Fridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley.
For what purposes? For litigation?
Attorney, just a general attorney-client privilege discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yeah.
Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Costanza.
Yes.
Ms. Ricardi.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Najerin.
Yes. Sorry, I took so long. We've got things to resolve, all right, so. Let's go. Swearing in the background.
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes.
Please state your names for the record.
Evan Hill, Board Engineer.
Ernie Peters, Board Planner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Okay, the first application to be heard is the variance thirty four forty five.
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I affirm.
Can you please state your name, spell your last, and provide your address, please?
Shandel Goldman.
Can we bring the microphone back? It's very exciting.
Okay. Shandel Goldman, G O L D M A N. And my address is three oh two Harding Court, Jackson, New Jersey. Oh. Okay, I'd. I'd like to put a pool into my back, it's back towards the side of my property, which they consider it the front yard. And I'd like to put a fence around it. Okay, so we decided we're gonna do a white vinyl full privacy six-foot fence. Yes, it is.
That's five foot open.
Right. Right, we were good, we changed our minds, we're gonna do, we were gonna do an aluminum fence five feet high. Privacy, I mean, not privacy fence, with a lot of landscaping, but we decided we're gonna do the privacy fence. Six feet high.
Solid.
Yeah.
Solid.
So the app, the, for the chair, the application was originally submitted five-foot open fence. Just around the, just around the pool, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Now, the applicant has asked for that to be amended to a six-foot-high solid fence, again, just with, just around the pool, however. The portion to the right of the house, or if you're left, if you're looking at the plan. To the east of the house is in the front yard because it's forward of the home, they're on a corner lot. Okay, so that's why they would need the variance for the fence and the pool. I do have a question about the plan that you prepared for us. You had an engineer prepare the plan, do a grading plan, you're aware that you have a drainage easement on your property, correct?
That's correct.
And there's a drainage inlet there, and the purpose of that piping and inlet is to collect the stormwater runoff, not only from your lot, but some of the lots to the back behind you, so it's a common drainage area. You are proposing to put that pool in that area, and that could have an impact on the drainage pattern off of your, off of your neighbor's property. You're almost creating somewhat of a, at least based on this, on the plan as it's provided, it's almost, you're filling the low spot that the water would be going to to reach that inlet, so I do have, I have a concern with that. I would, I would. I would prefer, and I don't, I think it's appropriate not to put an improvement like this in immediately adjacent to where the stormwater should be flowing to as it was originally designed, so I'm gonna ask you, is it possible to move the pool? Such that it's more in line with the rear of your house, it doesn't stick out as much, can you move it twenty-five, maybe thirty feet to the west? Or to the left?
I think, I mean, it's a little bit, it's impossible because you have to leave twenty feet. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's a little bit a problem, it's a little bit a problem to move it over to the west since twenty feet, we have to keep like a twenty feet.
To the rear.
To the rear.
Okay.
So there's no space over there, that's why we chose to move it a little bit to the east.
So the difference there would be, you'd be, you would, you possibly need a variance, a setback variance to the rear yard there in that case, or the side yard actually in that case, so that may not, at least from an engineering perspective, that's not as difficult to grant as it is in my mind, impeding the stormwater, at least, it appears that you're impeding the stormwater flow. For the, for the four lots in your area by putting the pool in this location. What I can, what I, what I would suggest is. You had an engineer prepare this plan?
Yes, we did.
I would, I would almost suggest at this point, if you go back to your engineer and ask him to really take a look at this area again, because I, based on what I see on this plan, this design has a negative effect on the drainage for your lot and the surrounding lots for the stormwater to get to that inlet. Okay, so I think that's a conversation you could have with your engineer, and he can certainly call me, we can, we can discuss our concerns, but, and work through this, but it's likely gonna require you to move the pool a little. One way or another. Okay?
It's not touching the drainage.
It's, it doesn't, it's. Stormwater has to flow over land in a, in a swale, in a low area, and it, right, and so it goes, it flows, water flows downhill over your grass to hit that, to hit that inlet, you're putting a pool and building up about three feet right in front of that inlet. That's the issue. You're, you're filling the low spot.
Uh huh.
Okay?
So would you be able to set it back even though there's a twenty-foot?
I, I think at this point, there's, there's a few different options, and I think it's best if we, engineer to engineer kind of talk about this. Okay, to get the quickest resolution? If you're okay with that?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, to the service termination, we're gonna carry this application.
Yeah, I would say carry until we could have, I could have a conversation with your engineer, and then maybe carry it for two weeks.
Carrying it for two weeks.
As.
Okay.
So with, like, this week or next, yeah. Yeah, this week, we can have, have your engineer contact me, or we can work through that.
Mr. Chairman, a quick question?
Sure.
Mr. Hill, I'm looking at the survey. And I went and looked at this property. The survey doesn't seem to indicate that this is a corner lot.
No, it is. You have Harding Court to the bottom.
Yeah.
And then to the right, in big letters, it says Adams Way with a fifty-foot right away.
Okay.
There's a patch of woods in between the house and Adam's Way, and within those woods is underground piping, and immediately on the fringe of those woods is where the inlet is.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
So this application, application number one, Shandel Goldman, variance three, four, four, five, block sixteen eight oh one, lot twenty-six, will be carried to the January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board with no further notice required.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board shall represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I affirm.
Thank you. Can you please state your full name, spelling your last, and provide your address, please?
Mr. Shalom E. Tyler, T E I L E R. My address is seventeen Drexel Drive. Okay, so if you see the highlighted area, there, there, I live in a ranch, my next-door neighbor lives in a ranch, and I wanted to put up a privacy fence between myself and him, and originally I had, I had, I had applied for and gotten approved for a six-foot fence, however, after that took place, my neighbor put in very large windows directly opposing my bedrooms, and being that that makes us feel extremely uncomfortable, we felt like we'd be a lot more comfortable with an eight-foot-high fence, I understand that eight feet is against the zoning rules, my understanding is that usually the fear of an eight-foot fence is if you have an enclosure, there's a safety issue if no one can see in, but over here, you can clearly see both sides from the street, it would just be eight feet. high in one spot, blocking between his windows and mine. So that issue, if that's what the issue of an eight foot fence wouldn't really be an issue.
For the chair, can, can you clarify, I'm sorry, can you clarify which, so you currently have a four foot high fence?
So there, I didn't actually put up any of the fencing, I put the fencing company on hold, but I got approved for, for, for the first twenty-five feet in front of my house for six feet high, and the front is four feet with two thirds of it had to be open according to the zoning laws.
Yep.
From there till the street as a privacy, and I now, I made a new application for this portion that's six feet to be eight feet high because of the new issue of those windows.
And it's not just what's in, is it just what's in yellow, or?
Yes, yes, the only part that I want to be eight feet is the part that's in yellow.
All right, so the, the remainder of the fence, as you head down the page and around the back of your property, that's, that still be six?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So for the board, on your plan, you should have a yellow highlighted area, and you can also see the yellow highlighted area on the screen. That is the only portion of the fence he's asking to increase in height to eight feet. The balance of everything else on here is permitted, so you don't have to worry about the six foot fence, that's, he's not here for that, he's only here for that thirty foot long section or so along the left side or the south side of the house, that's eight feet, that's, that's all he's here for tonight.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler, I'm looking at the, the diagram provided with your application. And I want, I don't see your name anywhere on it, I see that it was two, an Angela Dyson and a Freddie Dyson.
Yes, well, that is the previous owners, I have the survey from then.
All right. Uh, do you know how old this survey is?
Um, I believe it's from two thousand nineteen, I don't know.
Now, the, the footprint of items on this survey reflects a large pool, it looks like the word large pool, is the pool still there?
Yes.
I think that's I G for in-ground.
In-ground pool.
Um, it looks like an L G.
Yeah. There's, there's a indicator that there's a shed in the, in the back corner of the property, is that still there?
Yes, that's still there.
Uh, there looks to be like something hand drawn in. Um, I guess as you're looking at the screen, right next to the dwelling. It just some hand drawn in of a scribble, what is that?
Where, where are you talking about?
Yeah.
In the front of the house or the back of the house? In the pool in the house, there is a deck there. Um, I have, I, I don't know what that is there for. Hmm?
So this applicant was, this applicant originally submitted a zoning permit for a six foot high fence and a four foot high fence along with, um, an enclosed front and rear porch.
Right.
Jeff, the zoning officer, approved that because it was all permitted. Now the applicant, after he got that approval, wants to amend that, but is required to come back here specifically for the eight foot, the thirty foot of eight foot fence that he wants to put in. Everything else was approved by Jeff as the zoning officer because it's permitted.
All right. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Sir, I question, uh, this, this appears to me be a landscaping issue, have you introduced or considered landscaping?
Meaning as a privacy barrier as opposed to a fence? Is that what you mean?
Shrubbery, live trees, shrubs?
Um, I did think about that as a possibility, I wasn't sure if that would also need zoning, um, variances or anything of the sort.
No, I think it would remedy your issue plus provide further, it's not security, but privacy as they grow and mature, um.
And that wouldn't require.
I, I, I'm looking, I see this as a landscaping issue.
I'm s- I'm sorry?
I don't see your hardship, I see this as a landscaping issue.
Meaning because you have a different solution to that hardship? I mean, you don't view that as a hardship at all, you're saying that you have, there's another solution that wouldn't be a variance?
Um, said, the.
Right, you're saying that.
Trees, shrubbery, something of that nature.
Yes.
It would not require a variance to do that.
Would not require a variance?
No, you could put like eight foot high arborvities in, they're, they're, they're evergreen, they grow, they grow quickly. You could put those in and just that area or anywhere else on your property, and you don't require any variance relief, so you could stick with the six foot fence. And just plant some, plant some taller trees in that area, evergreens.
One second.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
My wife come up?
Sir, one, one more comment before she comes up. I went and looked at your property, and there seems to be a road between yourself and your neighbor, it looks like it's access to the, to the, um, the power lines behind you, is that correct?
Again, there's what?
Are there power lines?
Behind my house, yes.
Behind your house, right? And to the side of your houses, and there are, that accesses that goes to the back toward the power lines, right?
Correct.
Okay. I, and I was standing on that, that road, or it's really just an open area. And just to the left, your neighbor has got these trees there, they're about eight to ten feet high. Why can't you do that? Screen it.
You're saying the same exact suggestion that Mr. Costanza just said, right?
Sorry?
You're suggesting what Mr. Costanza just suggested, correct?
I'm sorry, I.
Am I, am I understanding?
Oh, yeah, I'm saying the same thing, this, that he's saying that it's really a landscape issue, I'm simply noting that your neighbor next door has, has solved that problem by putting the.
Oh, you're saying the next door, meaning the other side of?
The other side of that access road.
Right, you're saying number fifteen Drexel, he's completely enclosed by those trees, yes.
And he's got large, large shrubs in there that, they've gotta be ten feet high.
Yeah, you can't see inside as. Um, I, I don't necessarily know that's what I wanted to do.
Okay.
Um. Yeah. Um, yeah, the issue, as, as I thought, the, the main issue we would have with doing the shrubbery option is first of all, when I get in, I understand maybe more costly, but the upkeep is certainly more costly, and it's um, a much more difficult thing to maintain a nice tree than leave a nice fence. It's more difficult in the long run of a fix. It wouldn't require variance, but it would be harder on me, a lot harder on me.
I'd remind the board that it's, it's a variance application while the, the homeowner isn't a professional witness, um, it's still their responsibility to prove the, their hardship and the, the proofs that are required under the land use law. Um, an eight foot fence i- is a difficult proof, simply because A, we have an ordinance says six foot is the height, B, there's no testimony that that there are other locations in similar spots where an eight foot fence has been installed or permitted. Um, and the board members have offered reasonable alternatives to granting the variances. So from a strictly land use perspective, I don't know that we've heard testimony necessary to grant the variance from six foot to eight foot. Um, and if the board's not satisfied with the testimony we've heard today, perhaps the the applicant or the resident might wanna hire a professional, come back and offer additional testimony if they want to put the, if they want to continue to try to get the eight foot fence approved where six foot's permitted.
I, I do understand that shrubbery, woodwork and shrubbery is used in certain situations. Um, I. I'm not understanding, there's, this is not next to the pool. There, this six foot fence, that's, that's what I presented at the beginning, is that there is no safety concern because there's, you, the, the, this is one house, this is another, there's a fence in between the houses, you can see straight to the back from the street the same way, there's a six foot fence across the back, and I'm suggesting an eight foot fence that the, it's one directional, you can only, the only way you can see is from my house to his house, his house to my house. Otherwise, everything can be seen the same way.
Through the chair? Mister, Mister Tyler, let me give you a different, a different, but a, a perspective that I think the board is trying to convey to you. You have the solution in your hands by virtue of treating this as a landscape issue and by putting up some trees. And what you're suggesting in putting up an eight foot fence is so contrary to our code in my mind that it creates such a negative aesthetic that it changes the entire character of the neighborhood. An eight foot fence borders in my mind on making a neighborhood look like a compound. And I don't want our neighborhoods, and I've been to your house and I've taken a look, and I don't want other, other houses in our neighborhood to look like a compound. And as soon as you raise that fence up to eight feet, that's what it starts to look like. So the six foot has been well thought out in our ordinance to keep, to keep something consistent and to keep it neighborly and, and with a, with a very consistent and aesthetic look, the, the eight footer is not gonna, is, is a problem for me. Especially since you have, you do have the solution in your hand, and, and it's, and it's just a matter, and you said it might be a little bit more money and a little bit more maintenance, so there is a way to solve your problem, and an eight foot fence isn't it, not in my mind.
So. Um, yeah, so if, if I understand what you're saying, you're saying that I, I came here understanding that the main reason for six feet has to do with safety, and you're saying that there's also an aesthetic look that six foot fence is just a nice fence, and an eight foot fence is more imposing. And that's why it's only allowed in industrial areas and commercial areas and not in residential areas. And that, I, I, I explained why I have no safety issue, but I didn't change the look with what I'm saying, is that what you were saying, Mr.?
Well, those are your words, and in my words, I've placed on a record, and others have mentioned safety, and I took it to a, to a different place, but not an inconsistent place, and the different place is that it changes the look, the tenor, the feel, the aesthetic of the neighborhood, and it's also contrary to our code. Now, there are specific languages, language that's in our code that talks about the negative uh, and, and the positive factors, and I'll leave that up to the planner if he wants to walk you through that. Or if you're so inclined to hire a planner of your own, or an attorney of your own who could address those issues to us. But right now, the burden that you have to try to convince us that you would satisfy those very uh, those very important criteria, you, you, you're not, it's not happening. Especially with the testimony that you're giving to me, as respectfully as I can to you, I'm saying to you that that, that eight foot fence is, is, it's, it's just not appropriate for the reasons that I've stated and for other reasons that the board members have stated. Again, you, you have the power to resolve your issue by what Mr. Costanza, well, Mr. Hurley had addressed earlier.
Mr. Chairman, one more question if I can very quickly.
Yours is a one-story home, correct? How about your neighbor that you're concerned, that's a one-story also? How high is from the ground is it to your window?
So, um, I have a picture with me that shows that the windows go over this, the existing six foot fence, so I would assume it's about eight feet high off the ground.
I, I, no, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
I would assume, I, I didn't measure it. But I think it's around eight feet from the ground to the window.
Okay. So. Okay. I, I was just concerned that if you have two one-story homes and you're, and you're, you know, if your windows, I don't know if it's the top of your window, the bottom of your windows, eight feet. You know, even an eight foot fence is not gonna help you a lot there. You're probably better off putting the landscaping in even higher.
Any other questions?
No.
I want to open up the public, anybody care to speak for or against this application? Not seeing anybody coming forward, I'm gonna close public session.
Sorry, my, my wife did just raise a concern, um, some of the board members have mentioned that they came down and they saw my neighbors. I don't know if you've seen fifteen Drexel, what the trees around it look like, but they are unkempt, and they don't look right, and that, using that as a solution is not, that's really what's gonna end up happening, if you put in the same type of things that he did, it's going to.
So, um, if fif- you know, fifteen Drexel has a lot of very, very mature trees, so they've probably been there fifteen, twenty years easily. If you go down, if you go down to, if you go to nine, or I'm sorry, twenty-one Drexel, which is not the house next to you, but the next one, they have a pool, they have a six foot high fence, and they have arborvitie evergreens around the rear, along the side, and it's very well kept. You know, I mean, these, these, these trees grow, they're, they're low maintenance, they're meant to grow columnar, and they're meant to grow tall, and they're meant to grow fast. So, you know, your neighbor two store, two houses down has done exactly what the board is guiding you as probably your, your best option is here, and I'm gonna tell you, from what I'm hearing, I don't if you get denied the variance, you can't come back and ask for it again, that, then the trees are gonna be your only option. So if you get the denial, then you just put the trees in, right? Or you can agree to put the trees in and not, not, not worry about getting a variance. So. So, so just to, just to clarify, you, you do have the option, if you'd like, to carry the application to either consult with a planner or an attorney, if you'd like to pursue the variance. Um, and we would be willing to, to carry that, the application, or you could, uh, request that the board vote on the application tonight.
Okay, I'm gonna discuss with my wife. Um, so she, my wife wants me to reiterate one point before I tell you to go ahead, and that is that the, um, if the, the house at twenty-one, I'm saying, I don't know how much money anyone has, but the upkeep and putting, the putting in the type of trees they put in is more expensive. And upkeep to have it not look like fifteen is also expensive, and it's not really money that we necessarily have our hands on, it's not really money that we were looking to spend, so that would, that's not, that's not, that's not a land, um, hardship, that's definitely a hardship. Uh, that would be a hardship, but, um, I just wanted to point out that again, and, and that I've, that I feel that there is a it, without putting shrubbery in there, there is this hardship of the windows, and putting the shrubbery in there would be something that will end up making the house look ugly, making the street, the, the block look somewhat ugly, assuming that it won't be kept up well. Which I can't promise, I don't know for sure how it's going to happen, I just wanted to reiterate that point, but I'm put the decision in the hands of the board. Yes.
Chairman? Do you want me to read the C one and C two proofs for the record?
Please. Do you want, do you wanna read them?
You want them in the record?
Yes, please.
All right, under forty colon fifty-five D seventy, the powers of the Board of Adjustment. Um, under C one, they can grant relief. A, whereby reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of a specific piece of property. Or B, by reason of exceptional topographic conditions or physical features uniquely affecting a specific piece of property. Or C, by reason of an extraordinary and exceptional situation uniquely affecting a specific piece of property or structure. The board can grant relief, under C two, or an application or appeal relating to a specific piece of property.
The purposes of the act would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements and that the benefits of that deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment. The board needs to make those findings in order to approve the application.
So before we put vote, why don't we deliberate? I, I mean, I think we've placed on the record a lot, but why don't we?
All right, so at least deliberation.
Through the chair. Uh, I, I don't, the applicant's made statement that uh, he's basically not going to maintain his property. I, 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 I don't, I, I don't see that as a hardship. He's also pleaded that uh, financial burden. I, I don't see that as a hardship that's blown to this board. His concern is privacy. I can respect that. And I think that uh, um, the introduction of landscaping is more proactive to that end than it would be a solid fence that he may not be altogether satisfied with once it's erected. Um. I, I, I s- I stand by my opinion. This is landscaping too. This is not a, this is not a zoning issue in my opinion.
Yeah.
This chairman.
Yes.
Relative to a C one variance, the um, the obligation here is to establish a hardship that is related to, to the land. And I have not heard that. What I've heard is the hardship is, is a personal one. Uh, not related to the, the land, whether the configuration of the lot. Uh, anything relative to the size of a lot, nothing of that nature. So the hardship is more personal here than it, than it does relative, relate to land, relative to a C two variance. When we have to look at the detriment and, and the, and the benefit. Um, the benefit here all runs to this property owner, does not run to, in quotes, the general public, for example. And the detriment is, I think, what Mr. Book had already testified to. And with Mr. Costanzo's suggestion that the uh, matter can be resolved easily by landscaping. Uh, the applicant is simply indicating that it's a costly issue to them and it's not appropriate under, under hardship or C two. Therefore, I cannot support this application either.
I'll put forth a motion to deny this application. Basis uh, of the fact that the hardship has not been met as, as previously indicated.
Motion to deny Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi. Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next application.
Good evening, Stephen Leone, Caluchia, Leon Diamond Doyle. Happy New Year, everybody. This is a request for an extension of an approval that was granted in April of two thousand seventeen. And uh, extended by a resolution in um, January of two thousand twenty-two for two years. And then finally, a one year extension that was granted on um, November thirtieth of nineteen, of two thousand twenty-two. I'm sorry, that's incorrect. Um, on January fifth of two thousand twenty-two for a one year extension. So the extensions expire tomorrow. And we're here seeking a one year extension due to the fact that there is still uh, outs- outside approvals required from the Brick Township, not the Brick Township, the Jackson Township M U A. For a uh, uh, private pump station and from Ocean County um, for a road widening um, easement. That is uh, was determined to be required in March of this year. So they haven't had adequate time to be able to make the acquisition of that right of way in order to perfect their approval from um, the county of Ocean. So we ask that and, and, and also as an explanation to the board. Just as a precaution, the applicant sought and got an approval from the township to commence the work. Um, and therefore has actually started to clear the land. But when, that's not in derogation of the board's authority. We still would seek the uh, extension because of the outside approvals that we still want to get. Extension we're rat- requesting is one year.
So yeah, it looks. Swearing the professionals.
I'll let Mr. Stevens answer that question.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spelling your last, provide your affiliation and your credentials, please.
William Stevens, S T E V E N S. I am the vice president of professional design services and a professional engineer and planner licensed to practice in the state of New Jersey. And I've been appearing in that capacity in front of this board for several decades now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. It is good to be back here. So yes, the comments of Mr. Leone's opening remarks are, are all factual. The, the board is well aware of this project. This is a a project that I think the township would want to support. We're looking to build a, an office building here, really at the entrance to Jackson Township as you come into Lakewood and as has been testified in the past, we're looking to build class A office space here. It is a project, when we get this finished, that we're all going to be proud of. We are, to answer your direct question, Mr. Chairman, we are close to getting finished with the J T M U A now. They have given us a preliminary approval for the private pump station. And we are on the verge of getting our tentative approval, which will then let us go get O C U A and D E P approval. So we believe we can have all that finished within the course of this year.
Is this the first extension you're requesting?
No, this is, we've had two other extensions. The five year period has expired. However, the board has a discretion to grant additional.
So would this be their last? So just to clarify for the record and the, for legal purposes, they're not requesting an extension in the traditional sense. They would be entitled to three one year extensions on the original two year applicant. So the five year period is now expired. What they are requesting is an extension pursuant to uh, N J S A forty colon fifty-five D dash fifty-two D. Which allows the board to grant an extension not exceeding one year. Um, in the event that the applicant can show that the holdup is due to outside uh, uh, entity approvals. So what they're seeking is, is pursuant to that statute. Um, and in order to, to prove that they're entitled to that. Um, they would need to show that they were diligently, promptly pursuing those applications and approvals. Um, and that the, the holdup is because they have been delayed in obtaining those legally required approvals.
Thank you. I, I also want to point out, that's not Jackson Memorial High School, that's Jackson Liberty High School on the exhibit. My apologies, Mr. Costanzo, and you are correct.
So for the chair, um, Mr. Stevens, the, so in addition to wrapping up the J T M U A, you also have to um, perfect your approvals with the Ocean County Planning Board, correct?
That's correct. We have to acquire an additional right of way.
Okay, can you explain to me when you started that process?
That first came to the attention of the applicant in March of twenty, of the, of last year.
And it's March of twenty-one?
Twenty-two.
March of twenty-two, yeah. There was no dialogue with Ocean County up until March of twenty-two?
Let, let, let me respond, just, just to be clear. So, so what had happened here is we had a final approval from the Ocean County Planning Board. We were in the process of perfecting it when we came here for our last extension last year. And upon submitting for resolution compliance, the county decided they had a, a change of heart, wanted to change what they saw as our required improvements and most specifically what they want. We had a right turn lane coming off of County Route five twenty-eight into this project. They then asked us to extend that right turn lane into the driveway for Jackson Liberty High School, including reconstructing the driveway for Jackson Liberty High School. So it is a significant change. And while the applicant believes we'll be able to work through the process with the Jackson Township Board of Education, there is a house in between us and the school driveway. And that particular person has been through way too many issues with the county over the years and, and is not amenable to working through this. So we have to go through a condemnation proceeding to get that right away. And that is what's holding us up from finishing our county approval. But we are also close to getting that finished too. And I believe we'll have both of these issues resolved this year. And as Mr. Leone has stated, we have posted bonds and begun construction. So you will see some work happening out there, albeit we do still need to get this finished.
So has, has the applicant approached the owner of lot five point oh one to request right of way?
Yes, and, and, and even more than that, there have been many offers made to that owner. Uh, I don't believe I probably should put those details on the record, but they have been.
You haven't got, you haven't gotten any responses?
Uh, the response is resoundingly no.
Okay, all right. Um, with the J two M U A pump station, is there any deviations with their final, or do you anticipate any deviations from what they require now versus what was originally proposed?
Uh, not, not in any substantive form. I mean, there have been some small changes to the site plan showing.
Nothing significant.
But nothing significant. The pump station's still in the same location, the forest main's still going the same way. I mean, all the basic things that this board has approved are, are still going to be adhered to.
Okay, so uh, from the board's perspective, uh, Mr. Stevens and Mr. Leone both brought up the fact that some work is already started out there. Uh, the owner of the property or the developer of the property now is, has entered into a, a developers agreement or a hold harmless agreement directly with Township Council. That was approved, I believe, a month and a half ago or about a month ago or so. And what that means is it allows the applicant to proceed with prepping the land. And in this case, it's mostly tree clearing and I think some minor disturbance. So they have posted a restoration and um, stabilization bond with the town at this point, and that's it. So that's all they're allowed to do is just start prepping the land um, up to this point under that agreement. Um, as far as the issue that they're having with the Ocean County Planning Board, that is, that, that's, that's an outside agency issue. That's really not a zoning board issue in my perspective, okay? Uh, the fact that they are having this issue with the Ocean County Planning Board, that, that's really, in, in my opinion, that's, that's out of their control and is really out of this board's control. And I think it's, I think it's um, appropriate for an extension. Any discussion regarding whether or not the county planning board's requirements to obtain that additional right of way, again, is not part of this board's purview. That's part of a county planning board applicant owner of lot five point oh one. So there's not much, there, there's no relief or jurisdiction that we have over that, other than uh, just hearing what they're, what, what the issue is and, and whether or not that rises to level of granting and, and extension at this point.
It appears that the applicants met all the statutory requirements for a time extension um, that were described by uh, Mr. Murphy.
What, what are we extending? We're extending the site plan approval?
Yes.
The site plan.
Yes.
Good evening.
I'm going to go ahead and swear again. If you could, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board or to the professionals will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you please state your name, spell your last, and provide your address, please?
Uh, Stephen Kovacevsky. K O V A C O F S K Y. And we reside at eleven eighty-three East Veterans Highway, which is uh, block five point oh, lot five point oh one. The house in between Liberty's entrance and the lot in question. Yes, if I may read a uh, a statement I made so that I can keep my thoughts concise. I'm a little tired. Um, I'm here with my mother, Adele, uh, the owner and uh, also resident of lot five oh one. Uh, the lot to be affected by the county's requirement for the roadway expansion. Um, that being eleven feet for an Egress lane needed for the sixty-seven thousand square foot two story building to be adjacent, uh, on the adjacent lot seven point oh one. Uh, it is our understanding um, that this extension request today and previous extensions granted was requested uh, because of an inability to contact the proprietor of lot five point oh one to agree upon a suitable compensation for what would be a loss of multiple trees lining the roadway within this required eleven feet. Trees that assist in providing some sound absorption and visual privacy from the extremely busy county road. Uh, and thusly, their removal causing a decrease in quality of life. Uh, we have never been, to our knowledge, uh, contacted by any, by any party, be it the developer, legal representatives, or county engineers uh, on this matter in any form. No, nor has any resolution by the county of this issue be brought forth to us to even discuss. So that the, the, the development can actually begin. Um, we do though, however, invite whoever it concerns to contact us for the first time to begin discussion of a suitable arrangement with the county to equate the loss of the property's assets and what could echo the arrangement made between us and the county in two thousand nine for the loss of shrubbery assets when the road was expanded for the auxiliary entrance to the high school. So we have already lost in two thousand nine a round of our property. As a side note, while I read that part, um, I'm aware there's power lines on West Veterans Highway. Uh, in two thousand nine, and in this case, that property was not considered for expansion or repainting of the lines. This will be the second round. Our property has been reduced in size. Um, to continue. Um, yes, we have no issues with any extensions being granted. Considering this is the first time we've heard of, uh, pretty much heard of, of, of us being in the way of anything. Um, and that be, uh, as it may, we invite any discussion at this time with whoever needs to talk to us.
Yeah, I, I could assure you, we'll be in touch with you to try to satisfy you.
I'm, I'm surprised you thought we were in touch.
My client has advised me that he has written letters. I don't know. Sorry. I said that a client has written letters without response, as far as I know.
That's what certified letters, with receipts of uh, receiving.
Frankly, I don't know if they've been certified.
I mean, anybody can say.
Point is this, we'll be in touch with you.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Excellent.
One at a time for the record, please.
Yes, sir.
Do you need more testimony on the efforts to contact this owner or that the applicant will contact them and? Pardon? Yes.
So again, any, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to hear that the applicant's willing to work with the homeowners adjacent to it. But again, that's not a land use issue specific for the extension here. Um, that should hopefully, I'm sure Bill understands that that could accelerate the time schedule to. That should hopefully, I'm sure Bill understands that that could accelerate the time schedule to ultimately get additional right of way, so their project can be constructed sooner.
It could save a lot of money, frankly.
Could, yes. So um, it's I'm I'm glad to hear that the parties are talking, but again, that that really doesn't have any bearing on the time extension request.
I have a question. Has there any been any consideration by the board to um, take any side of West Veterans Highway?
Again, this is hold on, this is a county roadway, not a township.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the township has zero jurisdiction over these discussions. It's really between
Do you think they'd be swayed by such a claim?
No.
Okay.
Now, the county does like what they want they want to do.
Awesome.
So your best bet is to work with the applicant, maybe resolve your issue. That's probably the path of least resistance for all parties. And um, if not, I'm sure they'll advise you of the what the county's by law is entitled to do, which is go through and can start the condemnation process. And I don't think that's in the best of, I don't think that, I personally don't believe that's in the interest of best interest of anybody. So um, but again, from from a extension perspective, none of this has any bearing on what you're deliberating on tonight.
Correct.
Other than it's still an outside agency approval that needs to be obtained.
Mr. Chairman, quick question.
We may, yeah.
If I may of either our attorney or or Mr. Hill and Mr. Peters. Uh, this was a final site plan approval that's been granted?
This was preliminary and final, correct?
Yes, so they've got final.
Correct.
Okay. Refresh my recollection on preliminary approval, the protection, I believe, is for a period of what, three years, extendable for two?
That's correct.
And what is it on final?
Two and three one-year extensions. And when you ask for preliminary and final at the same time, you don't get both protections. You get final protection.
So you have a total of five years.
Immediately, you get two years.
Expire.
And you can request three one-year extensions. Those three one-year extensions lapse tomorrow.
The three of them?
Correct.
Do we have authority on the municipal land use to extend it for one more year?
Yeah, Mr. Murphy had read
Yes.
Uh, under forty fifty five D fifty three two. Uh, and the requirements for that, I can
Okay.
Let me read the section into the record if you want. Yeah, the way the way we the way we view it is the M L U L provides applicants the right for five years of extensions. It doesn't obligate. It doesn't keep them from asking for additional under us, under that, under that section.
And that becomes the discretion of the board based upon the proofs put on the record. Uh, there's indication from from the chairman that we'd like to hear from your principal.
Should I say? You opened it up to the public.
And the public take forward and now the principals.
Is it, why don't we ask, why don't we ask if there's anybody else from the public who'd like to speak? No, because we open procedurally, it's open to the public. So why don't we finish the public? And then we'll hear from the principal.
All right.
Malkiel David.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do affirm.
Okay. Can you please state your name, spell your last, and provide your address, please?
Malkiel David, D A V I D, two oh nine Arlington Avenue, Lakewood, New Jersey. All righty. Might regret that.
Akil, you represent the applicant, is that correct?
I do.
And Concourse Holding is the applicant, is that correct?
Correct.
When did you and your uh, partners take over Concourse Holding?
So let me give a dr- a little bit of a backdrop for what I know anyways. This property changed multiple hands over the course as it sort of wound its way through its original approvals and then uh, subsequent extension requests. We took over this project in uh, March of twenty two. It had a lot of loose ends open. It did have that final approval, which was on its uh, last extension. Um, we are end users. We're going to be owner occupants in 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 uh, in this property. Uh, and we're going to see it to the finish line. Uh, we pretty much wrapped up all the loose ends. As as Mr. Leone mentioned, we were only made aware of some of the the county requirements, namely the uh, easement purchase requirements. It was actually in July. And at that time, just to speak a little bit about our efforts to reach out to uh, the neighbor, I know there seems to be a little bit of confusion about that. We did have our uh, re- realtor, Barbara Brugazi of Exit Realty uh, reach out to them. Uh, she's been at their door a number of times. She's sent multiple letters. And that was a request at the time uh, to offer to purchase the entire property. Um, obviously, we only need eleven feet of that property. However, we were not prepared to make an offer for those eleven feet simply because we had no way of uh, ascertaining the value of an eleven-foot easement. So we have, upon direction of the county, we have retained a um, land use appraiser, appraiser uh, who was recommended to us by the county, who is going to be running the valuation. And once we do have that number, we certainly will revert back uh, to the owners and and try to reach an understanding.
Yes, to the person that I believe came to contact us. Yeah, I do remember a Barb who came about twelve days in a row, leaving sixteen business cards on every car, on every door, on top of ones from the day prior. That's not a professional way to contact an owner of a piece of property to to for an easement, and there was no talk of easement. She wanted to buy our property, and we had no understanding of her relationship with anybody, especially in reference to the property next to us. So if that's how he was getting in contact with us, no.
Yeah, I think we're making progress, so we'll be able to get together.
Yeah.
If I could just uh, apologize for the realtor's overzealousness. Yes. All righty, thank you again for the opportunity.
All right, so we listened to the public, the close public sector. I'm uh, making a request for a motion. Any deliberation?
Deliberation.
Well, through the chair, Mr. Chairman, um, I I think there's been enough information placed upon the record by Mr. Stevens, corroborated by Mr. Hill, and also uh, also corroborated by Mr. Peters uh, that I'm going to move right into a motion uh, to grant the one-year extension for the site plan seven seventy one dash three, which use variance three one five nine on their preliminary and final approval. Subject, yeah, subject, subject to the conditions that were placed upon the record.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Bridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Dando?
Yes.
Mr. Cardy?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes. You have your discussion for one year. Please. Thank you very much.
No.
All right. Okay.
We do have an announcement to make. The fifth application on tonight's agenda, White Oak Properties. Block that would be preliminary final site plan eight seventy five, block eleven five oh one lot seven point oh two. That is being carried to the February first. Two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board. With no further notice required, and that would be item three on the agenda for that.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Joseph O'Neil of Carafalo. Neil Rogirio. On behalf of Gaelic Communications, this is an application for a wireless telecommunications facility located on Jackson MUA property. This was approved by way of a duly executed bid. I have a number of witnesses here, but the story basically.
Excuse me, sir, if if you will. Acoustics are bad. The microphone is not great. We find if you hold that microphone a little bit closer to when you speak and speak a little louder, we'll be able to hear you otherwise. I know I'm having a hard time hearing you, so even if you have to.
I apologize.
Thank you.
I could definitely take care of that. The the story here with this site is Verizon has been looking for a site in this area. They have a significant gap. In their wireless network, they've been looking for a site for a number of years. I have a witness who can testify to that. What is going on, of course, is in town as the as the board knows. Municipality has a number of municipal preferences, so Verizon for a number of years explored. Getting a bid from the town for a cell tower. And the end of the story for that witness, if you want to hear it, but the end of the story is this bid in this application that's here tonight. I have a witness who can testify to the significant gap in coverage. We'll get to that. In a little bit, but I thought it best perhaps to address to introduce Mr. Cottrell. Our site engineer, we have the exhibit up on the board there. He has a board here. I'd like to go ahead, get him sworn and discuss exactly what it is we're proposing.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name, spell your last, provide your affiliation and your credentials, please.
Sure, Joshua Cottrell, C O T T R E L L. I'm with French and Pirello Associates. We prepared the site plans for this application. I have approximately twenty years experience in site plan engineering. Last fifteen years specifically geared towards the telecommunications industry. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've testified before over a hundred boards throughout New Jersey prior. I don't believe so, no.
Thank you, Mr. Cottrell. As I indicated, this is a result of a municipal bid. And the town bid this site. There are a number of dimensional issues with that. Why don't we just introduce the board to the site using your exhibits?
Okay, sure. I'm just going to reference the site plans that were submitted to the board their last revised. September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and it should be the set that you have before you and the setup on the screen. So as was indicated, the designated lot in the bid for a proposed cell tower was block twenty-two, two-two, one, one, seven, lot one. It's a one hundred foot by one hundred foot lot. It's currently vacant, a vacant wooded lot. I'm just going to go to the site plan on sheet S P one. As I indicated, a lot is one hundred foot, but why one hundred foot? The applicant is proposing to install a fifty foot by fifty foot fenced compound with gravel cover. With a new gravel access drive with access off Graham Avenue. In the center of that fifty foot by fifty foot compound will be a hundred and forty foot monopole. Verizon Wireless will install nine antennas at the one hundred and thirty-seven foot center line level on that monopole. Along with equipment at the base, the tower within the fifty foot by fifty foot compound. The tower is going to be setback fifty foot from the from the right of way. Fifty foot from the rear lot line, so it's going to be centered in the lot from the front to the back. It'll be positioned thirty-two point four feet from the sideline, which leaves the remaining sixty-seven point six feet. From the opposite sideline. The lot is located in the zone I, the industrial zone. And the lot is undersized for that zone. Where two acres are required, where the lot is only zero point two three acres, a two hundred foot is required for width. Where only one hundred foot is required, minimum frontage is one twenty-five. Again, we only have one hundred feet. And the minimum depth is two hundred feet where we only have one hundred foot provided. As I said, the monopole setback fifty foot from the front line where one hundred foot is required. Since the lot is only a hundred foot in depth, there is nowhere on that lot that would meet the setback requirement. We do comply with the rear yard requirement of fifty feet and the side yard requirements in the zone. In the industrial zone. The wireless telecommunications requirements. The minimum lot size in that ordinance requires five acres where only again, only zero point two three acres provided. The maximum tower height where three carriers is a hundred and fifty feet. We're proposing a hundred and forty feet with a minimum of four carriers. The minimum sack setback from a resident residential zone is five hundred feet. Where we meet that requirement, we're greater than five hundred feet to a residential zone. There is a residential use. That. You do not meet the requirement to. Which is in the planner's letter. So the tower setback one hundred and forty-two point six feet to the nearest residential use property. The tower setback two hundred and fifty feet approximately to the residential unit on that property. And two hundred and eight feet to a shed that is on that residential property. So we don't meet the five hundred foot setback to the pertinent buildings and. Residential building on that. The facility is unmanned. It is visited approximately once every four to six weeks by a self technician who performed routine maintenance diagnostics. So there's no increase in traffic. The site access is. Appropriate for that use. There is a thirty KW backup generator proposed in case of extended power outages. And there's. Three equipment cabinets proposed on concrete pad and electric utility and telephone utility. No water or sewer is required as it is unmanned facility.
Through the chair, how would that generator be powered?
Diesel fuel.
So there'd be diesel fuel stored on premises?
Yeah, so the generator itself sits on a sub base tank. Believe it's about two hundred gallon tank. So the generator sits on top of it.
And can I circle back one sec? You mentioned earlier about fencing. How high and what type of fencing will there be?
We are proposing a six foot chain link fence. I believe the ordinance requires eight feet, so we have no issue revising that to eight feet. And we are providing inch and a quarter mesh. To help prevent climbing of that fence, usually it's about two inch mesh. We're going to decrease that size as a anti-climb type measure, which is required by the ordinance.
As of course, subject to approval from the municipality since it was a bid.
Yeah, there was a comment in the planner's letter about the ordinance requiring an eight foot fence. Right now, we're proposing six feet. Six. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I? I may have missed a point. How how far is your nearest residential property line?
From the tower, it is. One hundred and forty-two point six feet.
And how high is the tower?
One hundred and forty feet.
So you're not within top wing distance of the property line?
Correct.
But you are within top wing distance of the right away.
To that to that point. Perhaps you could go into the standards this tower is designed to and how this tower is designed to fail.
Right, so. Well, the tower is not designed to fail. It's designed for code for the telecommunication industries association. It'll meet all the required wind speed requirements. So. Right. So. That that residential dwelling is two hundred and fifty feet from that tower. So for that tower to impact that house. You would need a strong enough wind to pick it up off its foundation, move it seventy feet and then knock it over. So. I believe in this area, it's around a hundred and twenty mile per hour winds.
If it goes above a hundred and twenty, it's subject to toppling?
No, there's a lot of safety factors built in there.
It's actually three times a hundred and twenty, isn't it, by the applicable standards?
No, it's not. It's. So it's a hundred and twenty mile power win, three second gust, but there's other safety factors built into that. We're not saying if you have a hundred and twenty-one mile per hour wind, it's going to fail. So the the safety factors over design it, basically.
For the chair, if I may, the the. The structural loading design for this structure isn't is would be would have to be consistent with the. International Building Code standards for any structure that we would have in Jackson. So there doesn't differentiate that. However. There are standards specific to wireless towers that add safety factors into certain structural components above and beyond. The I B C code minimum requirements. So now as part of a land use application, we don't get to see those structural calculations. However, those structural calculations will have to be provided by or provided to and reviewed by our code enforcement officer. I'm sorry, construction officials prior to issuing a building permit.
And those will be provided when they submit for building permits.
For the chair. I guess evident and to pick up on, I guess, Mr. Hurley's point. As I'm looking at Mr. Peters letter and I'm hoping that you're going to go into great detail on this where you're seeking a variance. There are fall zone requirements. You've got so you have a fall zone issue where you're 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 not complying with the fall zone issue. Your overall lot size is way undersized based upon the requirement in the zone. And so what's happening is it's raising my concern for the safety of of the of the residents in the area. So I would very much like to hear. What conditions, if any, you're proposing to impose upon that to ensure the safety of residents should this. Storm, whether it's a hundred and twenty miles an hour or more, and quite frankly, if 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 there's some, if it is a hundred and twenty miles an hour, that's not impressive. Especially where you're looking to put this in a residential zone. So I'm concerned about that, and I think that's what a couple of members may have been driving at as well. But if if there's no testimony to that effect, Evan, I don't know how we evaluate.
Now, I agree, and I I would agree that the applicant should bolster his testimony on that as well. But I also think you should bolster your testimony on why this piece of property and how and and not and how it was chosen or how it was brought to your attention. I think you glossed over it in your opening comments, but I think it's important for you to get on the record and expand on the fact that. This parcel of property was designated by the township, right, as being. I'm sorry, the M U A as being. A suitable candidate for this, right? It's it's. So I I'd like to, I don't want to do the testimony. I think we need to hear that from them.
Did you want to?
I want you, we will provide that testimony, but I would like you to testify as to the structural integrity of the tower. How towers are designed to collapse.
Okay, so this is not in a residential area. It's a there's a residential dwelling two hundred and eighty feet away or. But it's an industrial zone. It's made of steel. So when you think about tall structures failing like a tree, a tree is very brittle. You'll see the branches shear right off. Sometimes you'll see the top of a tree shear right off and fall. Steel acts in a different manner. It's a different type of material. The likelihood of the failure. So when steel fails, it's basically it bends and does not return to its original shape. So when a structure like this fails, it'll bend. And as it bends, it reduces the wind loading on the side of it. If it fails even more, it it typically won't shear off and drop and fall like a tree falls. It'll create a hinge on one side of the monopole of the steel typically towards the midsection to the upper third. And it'll kind of fall on itself, kind of like bending a straw in the middle. So it doesn't shear right off and topple over. As would a like a tree. And quite frankly, if there's winds that high that are going to make this tower fail. The sixty to seventy foot trees would be more of a safety issue. The trees would fail before this this structure would. So that's more of a safety issue to the to the residents than this pole would be. Yes, and it'll be designed to accommodate all that weight. So when they design the tower, they're going to assume. Probably the three, the four carriers I show on this drawing, plus probably another two carriers above that to one sixty. So they're probably going to show six levels of antennas when they. When they add the loading to the structure, so the structure is going to be designed to accommodate. A lot of extra loading. It's going to be overdesigned. As as well as the foundation will be.
Question? Mr. Chairman? Just a quick question. I I assume you're going to testify, and I may have missed it if you already did about gaps in the service in the area.
We'll have a. That'll be next.
Okay, and I just want to make sure you had the elevations here that you need. You talked about trees in the area. My understanding of of these antennae that it's really line of sight. Is that correct?
That that'll be a different.
That'll be our next question.
Okay. Thank you.
So I do have a couple of questions regarding the fence, just just it it your proposal. It's eight foot or six foot?
We're proposing a six foot.
Six foot barbed wire?
No barbed wire.
No barbed wire, okay. Access, access for the. Emergency access for the six wide, six foot wide access gate. Are you proposing a Knox box for for emergency access?
We're not proposing that, but we can provide that.
Okay, I would just say whatever, just make one of your outside agencies is going to be fire and fire safety approval, right?
So so usually the the gate is secured by a chain with that can be cut with bolt cutters.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Other than just to mention that. This project does not rise to the level of what's called a major development by the stormwater management, right? So what I mean by that is there's less than a quarter acre of impervious cover and less than one acre of disturbance, therefore they're not obligated or required to install. Stormwater management measures. The grading plan has been designed to not adversely impact the adjacent properties. They're completely surrounded by woods and any increase in stormwater runoff would be rather de minimis in this case.
I just had a quick question. You had indicated you're proposing a six foot fence, but you're amenable to offering the board an eight foot fence. Is that correct?
I think we are. I don't know if there's any issues because it was, I think the bid indicated a six foot fence.
So I don't. That's just subject to approval of the municipality regarding the bid.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
I have no further questions for this.
Yeah, I apologize. I probably should have jumped in earlier. Our office has a report. Dated October twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and. While the witnesses gone through this testimony. I think would be helpful for all. Go through the report, witness by witness, pick out the ones you're working on and tell us what you're doing. We have to prepare a resolution. Someone's got to do resolution compliance. So when we're done, whether it's this witness or all the witnesses, I'm going to ask the applicant's attorney. I have this. I have this report. You agree with everything in it? And if you don't, tell us what you don't so we can write a resolution about it. Otherwise, I don't know how you do resolution compliance. Fair enough? Thanks.
All right, Mr. Contral, sit down and let's go through the report line by line. So we'll start to, if that's all right with everybody, we'll just jump to page four. Sure, we'll just jump to page four. Discuss some of the issues brought up on page four. Uh, conditional uses on lands owed by the township. This is owned by the M U A as we've discussed. We discussed the variance regarding the lot size. We'll get into that a little bit with site acquisition as to, uh, how the town is responding to Verizon's need in the area. Monopole is designed to accommodate multiple carriers, which is item number three, item number four. Not located closer to five hundred feet than any residential zone. We are not within that five hundred feet to a residential zone. We discussed the, uh, fall zone issues regarding the tower. That the tower does not fail like a tree. It's not going to fall down like a tree. It's going to bend and collapse upon itself. And that is a function of, uh, wind load and structural issues, which will all be calculated as part of the construction drawings. I believe there's a comment later in this report regarding those calculations. We'll get to that. Item number six, we're talking about a ten foot landscape buffer. Our planner is going to talk to that. He's going to discuss that this is a wooded area. There's no additional planning really needed, but we can discuss that when the planner gets up. Bulk standards, we'll skip over that. I believe Mr. Contral summarized that pretty well. Jumping now to page seven. Going to go down to site plan issues. And with lot size, we've discussed A, we've discussed B. We are a monopole, so we're complying with that. C proximity to residential structures. I believe Mr. Contral discussed that detail. D. Items listed under. I'll have to pull the, we'll get back to that. I have to pull the standard out to take a look at that. New telecommunications towers, five hundred to a residential zone. We've discussed that under E on page eight, number two. Falls on established. We've discussed that. Hundred and fifty percent, we, as we've discussed, we do not comply. Uh, but that's not how this tower is going to fail if it should fail, which it will not fail. Landscape buffer again, item number four. Five, the security fencing, we've already made the commitment to go to eight feet, subject to township approval, which we fully expect to get. We propose six feet. The report's asking for eight feet. We're willing to modify to go to the eight feet. But because it's a municipal bid, we have to get approval to change the bid specifications. We do not anticipate that's going to be a problem for that fence. So we're committing to that for eight feet.
I can, just for clarification, you proposed eight foot high on your plans.
I I believe we proposed six feet.
Uh, proposed eight foot high chain link fence.
Okay, okay. Um, the detail we show shows a six foot high.
All right, that's why there, yeah, there's a lot of confusion.
Yeah, okay. Okay, yeah, so our detail on sheet S P four shows a six foot high fence. That's what I was looking at.
And Ms. Rich, ju- just so we're clear. The section of our land use ordinance dealing with cell towers requires an eight foot fence. Just like industrial uses, we don't want people going in and farting around with them. So it's not, I asked for it, the code asked for it. Quite frankly, if they don't meet it, they need relief. They, we call it an anti-climbing device. So and then I think Mr. Mr. Contral had indicated what they were doing.
So moving on now to number six, we discussed the steel structure. It's a galvanized steel finish. Uh, six and seven talk about F A A lighting. There's, as you will note from the plans, there's no F A A lighting proposed, nor is anything we did needed here. The signage is covered in a detail, I believe, on the plans. Is that right, Mr. Contral?
Yeah, so the only non, uh, the only sign proposed that is not F A A or F C C required is a Verizon wire, this I D sign, that'll be posted on the front gate. It just identifies the, um, site I D and provides a number in case there's an emergency and someone has to contact Verizon.
Moving on to page nine, co-location. We've already discussed that co-location. That's provided for in the bid and subject to the design here. As Mr. Contral pointed out, tower is designed to actually be expanded, which of course would need board approval, but it's going to be designed structurally for any expansion. Uh, the location priorities, we've already discussed. That's outlined in your ordinance. Moving on to additional comments, starting at K. We've, we'll talk, we've talked about the, uh, tower structure itself. We'll talk about the F A A, the, uh, F C C requirements. We're going to talk about the coverage issues. That'll comprehend K. Comprehensive service plan with that as a reference to, that's a reference to the Verizon, who is the main carrier on this tower. That is a reference to their network. Be discussing that next. Waivers, I believe we've covered, uh, some of the information requested by those waivers. If I've not, I we will get get to that. Site plan based on actual field survey. You cannot amend it to actually cover the residential properties on a neighboring lot because we do not have access to that residential lot. That would be trespassing. What we can do is we could scale it off of Google Earth and provide estimates for those distances. Isn't that true, Mr. Control?
Um, yes, and the numbers I provided are based off aerial information that I scaled. Um, so we can update the site plans to reflect those distances from the pole to that nearby, uh, residential property and the structures on it.
So that's N and O. Uh, P Edison Avenue is a paper street, as is pointed out. We are not proposing any improvement to the paper street nor is anything contemplated by the bid itself. We don't see any need for that. Monitoring and maintenance, Mr. Contral, maybe you can talk about that a little bit. The site's remotely monitored. Is that true?
Uh, yes, it's remotely monitored and I believe I stated it. It's visited by a cell technician uh, once every four to six weeks, um, rising a typical S U V type vehicle, um, use on site for a few hours. Um, and that's it. So once every four to six weeks.
Now at the bottom of page nine, letter R, testimony regarding compliance with abandonment. That's actually covered by the bid documentation. We're already required to do that, so we will be doing that. Moving on to S. We'll discuss the negative impacts, which basically are visual. With our planner, T, uh, tree removal permit, we will comply with all regulations at the appropriate time for tree removal in accordance with the site plan if it should be approved by the board. Negative impacts, that's going to be our planner. Radio frequency emission studies, that's already been submitted. This tower fully complies with all F C C requirements. W and X, that's what I was talking about earlier regarding calculations for structural wind loading. That'll be provided during construction drawing phase. We will comply with all applicable requirements, well within all applicable requirements. Surface material of the compound area should be labeled on the site plan. I'm assuming that refers to the stone. Is that true, Mr. Good Trail?
Um, yes, we can put that on the site plan.
And we have the, uh, lease agreement. I stand corrected. They do have a provision for a hundred and sixty feet to uh, be for future accommodation of additional carriers. We're not proposing that at this time. Uh, double A. There appears to be an error in my statement of application. As hard as that is to believe, I will correct that error. Double B, the fencing gate, eight foot, we've already covered that. Double C. We're going to need a fence detail. Is that going to be a problem, Mr. Contral?
No.
We'll get to the, uh, regardless, section six here, variances, waivers. We will get to that with our planner. Regarding the proofs. We're not providing landscaping again because of the wooded nature of the project. We will discuss that with our planner. He has an aerial photo to show you as to what this actually looks like. It is heavily wooded. It's support is no doubt aware. Regarding section G, I'll let my planner handle that, but I would assume that given the nature of this application, that some of these bulk variances would be subsumed into the use variance, but I'll leave that to him. I don't want to steal my planner's thunder there. He always gets mad when I do. H. Same thing. I believe we've covered, uh, most of the points here. Report. If I missed anything, I apologize. We'll certainly answer any questions.
Mr. Contral, there, um, while I didn't list them in in my planning report, um, as a condition of approval, you'll provide all applicable outside agency approvals to the board?
Uh, yes, absolutely.
That's all I have, Mr. Control. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have two follow up questions, um, or comments. One is, um, we do recommend that a concrete driveway apron be installed since you're proposing gravel onto the roadway. Uh, there there are standards within our ordinance for, um, concrete driveway aprons.
Uh, concrete apron?
Oh, yes. Yep, concrete apron at the driveway. And then I also would like you to take a just double, just take another look at your proposed piping design underneath the the um, gravel driveway. Um, you are proposing class five R C P because of cover, but you only have about two inches of cover on top of that pipe, which is not consistent with your details. So just just double check that.
The intent is to provide six inch minimum cover.
Yeah, so I think you're going to have to boost, bring your grades up a little bit there with your gravel there. So again, that's a resolution compliance issue, so I'm not too concerned about that. Uh, but I just, I want to, I I did want to point it out to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we will do that, uh, concrete apr- apron as recommended. Again, I have to qualify that it's going to be subject to approval by the change in the bid. We don't anticipate any problem with that. So I'm sure you can imagine. I have no further questions for this witness.
Just one, um. I guess for Mr. Peters and Mr. Hill. This is not an application for subdivision. This is a lease. Do bulk, do the bulk requirements run to the property line or the lease line? How is that handled?
The property is located in the I zone, so the bulk analysis we did was for the fifty, uh, for the hundred by hundred lot, not the lease area.
So the bulk, the let me make sure I understand.
The bulk standards for the I zone were applied to the entire lot.
To the entire lot.
The section of the code relating to the wireless telecommunication facility often refer to the property boundaries. If there's any discrepancy between the property boundaries and the lease line, the applicant can reconcile those. But from our perspective, we look to the property line.
Okay, so I guess the answer to my question is that since this is not a subdivision, the the bulk requirements do not run to the lease lines. They run to the property lines in the I zone.
I think they're one in the same here, are they not?
We are running it to the property lines.
Yeah, I mean, it's a hundred by a hundred foot lot of record. The lot is one hundred by one hundred. Your lease area is what? That's it's fifty foot by fifty foot. Your lease area is fifty by fifty, which is the compound, right?
Correct.
Okay.
This is, this is a lease agreement with the M U A.
Yes, but your wireless ordinance contemplates things done to the, uh, size of the lot itself, to the lot lines, which is how we've represented the distances here. Thank you, Ms. Cole. What we'll do next is we will discuss the, uh, gap that Verizon has in service here, and then we'll get into the history of the, uh, hunt to fill that gap. Well, as you're going to see, these things sometimes do not land exactly where they're supposed to be, but it does fill the gap. She's gonna, she's gonna tell you all about it.
Good evening.
You please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I will.
Can you please state your name, spell your last, provide your affiliation and your credentials, please?
Sure. Stephanie, last name is spelled K O L E S. Twenty one forty seven, Route twenty seven South in Edison, New Jersey. I'm a senior radio frequency engineer with VCOM telecommunications engineering. I have twenty nine years of wireless telecom experience, three years with VCOM. Uh, thirteen and a half years with Verizon Wireless, uh, and in the capacity of a radio frequency design engineer where I had thirty one hundred square miles of design responsibility, which encompassed roughly, um, seven counties throughout northern New Jersey and eastern Pennsylvania. I do not.
Wireless telecommunications, uh, experts are not licensed. It's not required.
I have appeared, um, before in New Jersey bef- uh, in front of other boards ten times here in the state of New Jersey as an expert witness.
We take no exception to the witnesses qualifications to testify as a radio frequency engineer.
Thank you.
Ms. Coles, why don't we get right to it and show them the gap? We have your first exhibit, which we're going to mark here as exhibit A one for this evening.
Sure thing.
And to just give you a preview of the next witness, you can see its caption, Jackson asphalt, which we will explain going way back how this started. That it, they carry the name of the site forward throughout the hunt for the actual location.
Excuse me, just a minute. Anthony, can that be brought up on the screen?
Okay, this appears in our report that was submitted with the application. It's map number two. It's the R F analysis and report dated May twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, Rev. Three. Page eight in the report.
Ms. Coles, just so I know, we're looking at the same thing. As I'm looking at your VCOM analysis and report, page four seventeen reflects a map one and page eight of seventeen reflects a map two. She is referring to map two.
Map two.
All right, thank you.
Map two, this is existing coverage at twenty one hundred megahertz, which is referred to also as the A W S band. Verizon operates on four distinct bands, seven hundred, eight fifty, nineteen hundred, and twenty one hundred. Um, O C C Jackson asphalt, the proposed OCC Jackson asphalt, the proposed site here. As you can see, this. Let me just back up and, and, and explain that the coverage map is in orange, the threshold of. Minus ninety-five dBm. RSRP, which is a measurement of. Uh, reception on a typical device, which all RF engineers use as a frame of reference for designing cell site coverage. So what that represents minus ninety-five is a acceptable level threshold for. Good on-street coverage and suburban in-building coverage. So anywhere that you see orange on this map. Is meeting that threshold, anywhere where there is no orange. Is deficient. And the proposed site OCC Jackson asphalt here. Happens to be in an area where you don't see much orange going on.
Moving on to what we're going to call A2. Also contained in the report.
This is map three in the report. This is. With the added overlay of the proposed coverage from OCC Jackson asphalt at a center line of. A hundred and thirty-seven feet. And as you can see, it's filled in quite a bit. Of this area here. Uh, in the report. I do describe, um. The coverage gap, uh, stretching. Uh, includes a stretch of Whitesville Road, CR five twenty-seven, heading into Tom's River Township. Along, uh. Talamar Estates, including businesses at five thirty through five thirty-four Whitesville Road. And at the corner of Whitesville Road and Faraday Avenue.
Now, at what antenna height is this, uh, exhibit?
This is at one thirty-seven.
If you go below one thirty-seven, you start opening up gaps on the edges?
Yes.
Ms. Coles, excuse me. On, on your map, the white area. It looks like this, it's generally residential type, what does the white, you have orange, you have green.
Well, there's. Other map, um, lay overlays here, uh, green is, you know. Uh, I don't have a legend for that. What we're paying particular attention to is the orange, that's the coverage.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the lower part of that map. Where it says OCC, Ocean, I guess that's Ocean County College, Whitesville Mall, also anyway, it says Whitesville Mall. You see that one?
Yes.
Right here. Map two is the one we're looking at, correct?
This is now map three, this is the. Proposed coverage overlay here now.
What am I looking at on your, your layout here, this is page. Eight of seventeen, that's map two.
That's map two or A1 is marked by the applicant.
So eight nine is map three.
That's correct, marked A2 by the applicant.
I have the same question on map three. If you look at the Whitesville Mall, you have a red dot there.
Correct.
That indicates an existing tower, correct?
It is a, what's called a small network node, it is not a tower. Uh, Verizon Wireless has. Smaller cell sites throughout their network, which provide very localized coverage.
So. That one dot, that red dot for that mall. You have orange around it, except there's also white that's right next to it. Does that mean they're not getting coverage there?
Um, that's pretty much what that represents, again. That particular site is not a full-fledged. Macro cell site. It is a small network node and they tend to be at a very low height.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair. Question, and, and you may get to this, I may be ahead of you, but what's the general radius, one, once the tower is set and erected? What is the general, what is the radius of operation? How far out reaching?
That is all depending on the topography, the terrain surrounding the site. You know, certainly. The design of the site is governed by the other sites around it. And, and certainly, as you can see, there are some coverage gaps on twenty-one hundred megahertz elsewhere in Jackson Township. For twenty-one hundred megahertz, which covers less than the lower frequency, seven hundred and eight fifty. Typically, you know, on a flat terrain, um. Uh, area, uh, you know, it could be two and a half miles, but again, it depends on trees and ground clutter.
This model that you're referring to here is a computer model. It takes into account topography, tree foliage, building type, uh, absorption by the buildings, of course. Signal is lost as it passes through different materials like buildings.
Yes.
So a steel structure in the city. Is more absorption than a structure. A residential home out here, for example.
Yes.
And that's all taken into account by this, uh, this map.
By the propagation program, yes.
And the trick, of course, if we haven't talked about, I don't think we've talked about it, but it's in your report, is. The trick here is. You have small areas of coverage, your cells. Covered and you're recycling. The radio frequency between the cells, so as you move between the cells, it hands you off to a different tower. That tower selects an open slot and your call is routed to that slot by the computer. Which is why they're, they used to be called cell phones. More than they are now, they're just mobile phones now, but. That's the, that's the technology, so as you can see on this map. Uh, they do have smaller sites, they do have additional gaps. Which need to be addressed, but you can't pump this tower up. To a thousand feet, load it up with antennas. And then try to cover everybody at once because of the population density and other factors, isn't that right, Ms. Cottrell?
Yes, that would be true, um. The center line is chosen to. Complement the rest of the coverage around a certain area, and if it was too high, it would interfere with other sites, if it's too low, it wouldn't be as effective.
But it does at this height and in this area, cover a significant gap in the service of Verizon.
Yes, yes, it does.
Wonder if you could talk a little bit about how this complies with FCC regulations, of course, as we just. Pointed out, these are low-power sites, small sites designed to cover small areas, so it's not like those giant AM antennas. How does this comply with FCC regulations?
Uh, the proposed site, um. As it stands designed, uh, with Verizon at a hundred and thirty-seven feet, complies. That is the center line, that is how far above ground the antennas are mounted on the tower. And this particular site, um. Does comply well within the. What is called maximum permission, permissible exposure, the RF emissions. So it's, it's quite. Uh, it meets that requirement quite readily.
That is in your report, which we've already filed. I have no further questions for this witness.
Verizon obviously has an FCC license, is correct.
Yes, they do, many.
Just a curious question. Uh, your Verizon, uh, do some of the other providers, do they have towers in the area as well, I mean, is there a duplication of towers or do you all share the same tower? I'm just kind of curious, I know it's maybe a little off topic, but I'm curious.
Well, certainly colocation is encouraged, so you'll find, you know, Verizon and AT&amp;T and T-Mobile. Pretty much on the same tower in a lot of locations, uh, especially when you happen to be in more rural locations where the network isn't quite as mature.
They can't, uh, directly coordinate with each other, but all their site acquisition though. And towers get approved with colocation possibilities and the opportunities open up, but there's no direct. Cooperation between the carriers. Well, this is where we get to hear about Jackson asphalt, so Mr. Stein, you want to come up? Now, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about the site acquisition process.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, can you please state your name, spell your last, provide your affiliation and your credentials, please?
Name's David Stein, uh, S.T.E.I.N. I am set acquisition for Smartlink and Verizon. Uh, I've been set acquisition for approximately eighteen years now, uh, with various different carriers.
I'll present Mr. Stein as a fact witness for this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Stein, have a seat, please. Now, you were not. Originally responsible for locating the Jackson site, isn't that true?
Yeah, that's correct.
You have had an opportunity to examine the Smartlink and Verizon files regarding this site.
Yes.
Wonder if you can give us a little backstory as to how this site came about?
So Verizon's been looking for a site in this location for a while, uh, there's a couple of other sites, uh. The asphalt companies, I believe they're on, uh, Hope Road, uh. Were consideration for that, but it did not provide enough coverage in the area that they were looking for, uh, as well as the. The proposed locations, the landlords there were not interested in having something on that location, uh, so between those two considerations. Uh, Verizon continued to look in the area, uh, and the MUA was a good location for them, they've actually been in. In negotiation contact with the MUA since two thousand and eighteen, uh, asking for this to, to, this location to go to a bid. Uh, and it has been, you know. Discussed for a bid since two thousand and eighteen and, uh, was able to finally go to a bid, uh, at the end of, uh, twenty twenty.
That bid was put out, Verizon was one of the interested parties that bid in that, is that true?
Yes, we, Verizon did submit a bid for that.
But you got beat out by my client Gaelic Communications, which is why we're here, and now Verizon is going to be. Leasing a slot on this tower along with hopefully other persons, other carriers, I mean.
Yes, that's correct.
You mentioned that there was the, uh, asphalt site that didn't quite cover the network, when you, uh. Look at these sites, you coordinate with, uh, people like Ms. Coles as to whether or not the sites are appropriate?
Yes, uh, yeah, we absolutely coordinate with, uh, with RF engineers, uh, you know, it's, it's. Not helpful to have a site that doesn't give the coverage that is needed, uh, so, you know, we, we like to coordinate with them in order to get the exact location that they want, that they want and need.
They actually issue something called search rings, don't they?
Yes, uh, they kind of give you a, a main focus point of where they would like the, the site where the, the coverage is needed. And give you a, a radius of anywhere from half mile to a mile or so, uh, around that area. In, in order to find a location there.
And of course, the, uh, asphalt, what was going to be the asphalt company, and now this site are all within that search ring, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Just one, I, I'm a little confused because the applicant here is Gaelic Communications LLC, we keep talking about Verizon. Who holds the, the FCC license here?
Verizon holds the FCC license, and what the carriers have done over a number of years is they've contracted with different companies to provide. Towers for them. I don't think any of the carriers, I, I could be wrong on that. Own their towers anymore, I believe they've sold them all the companies you may have heard of, American Tower, other companies. Gaelic Communications is one of those towers, it's a developer of cell towers. What they do is they enter into lease agreements with carriers with FCC licenses such as Verizon, T-Mobile, Sprint, et cetera. Uh, to.
Here, the applicant here is a lessee, and essentially what the lessee is doing is subletting space on the tower to the various carriers.
Gaelic is the operator of the tower there, the applicant. The, uh, tower, the appropriateness of the tower, the particular suitability of the site is determined by the. Radio frequency testimony of Verizon, who came up and demonstrated to you that this site fills a significant gap in their network. So. That's the basis of the application here, Verizon holds a lease on a slot that you see on the plans before you for their antennas. And the other carriers will come in on those different slots as they feel appropriate.
Okay, now you've really confused me, just, just for. For purposes of the record. The applicant here is a lessee of the property from the Jackson Township Municipal Utility Authority.
That's right.
Okay. And the applicant here then will. Sublate space on the tower or lease space on the tower to the various carriers.
And they have already done that regarding Verizon.
Okay, thank you.
Very well. Yes, Mr. Moronsky, who is chomping at the bit. My next in list witness.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you for raising your right hand, do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board. Will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state your name, spell your last, provide your affiliation and your credentials, please?
It's Sean, S.E.A.N. Moronsky, M.O.R.O.N. S.K.I., I'm with Lang and Engineering and Environmental Services, three hundred Kimball Drive, Parsippany, New Jersey.
Mr. Moronsky, have you appeared before this board before?
Um, this is my first time appearing in Jackson, um, just to give you some of my background, um, I'm a New Jersey licensed professional planner. Also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, I've been a professional planner for over twenty-five years. Appeared before over a hundred boards throughout the state, locally have appeared in Tom's River, Berkeley, uh, Freehold Township, just to give me. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moronsky, you've had an opportunity to examine the application that's here before the board?
Yeah, yes, I have, um, I've reviewed, obviously, the, um, application documents, I reviewed the correspondence from your professionals. Um, also the relevant sections of your zoning ordinance and your master plan documents, and I have visited the site. This aerial, which I guess would be A3. We did not submit it electronically, but I do have eleven by seventeen copies for everybody for easier reference, should I give that to? I do, I do, I will give the two to the professionals, no.
We're marking this A3.
We're gonna mark that as A3.
I'll mark it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just to give you some perspective, A3 is an aerial, uh, map of the site and generally the surrounding area. Um, it, this, this aerial was prepared by my office under my supervision. The property in question, which is approximately at the center of the map, is outlined in red. And as, uh, Mr. Cottrell previously described, uh, the lot is a one hundred foot by one hundred foot lot, a square, um, ten thousand square feet. The yellow lines represent the individual tax lots, uh, in the surrounding area. And the purple line indicates a two hundred foot radius from the lot lines, just to give some perspective in terms of, of the immediate area. As you can see around the site immediately, it is substantially wooded. Um, to the west, you have the, um, unimproved Edison Avenue right of way, you have several of the surrounding lots, um. Graham Avenue, which is on the north side, uh, goes in the east-west direction, Edison goes north. Generally speaking, the area is, um, it's an industrial zone, mostly light industrial uses, you do have some non-conforming residential uses, uh, to the west. Um, as was noted in previous testimony. So the conditions, um, that have been mentioned, the non-conforming conditions in terms of lot width, frontage and depth. Um, each a hundred feet, uh, those. Do not conform with the I-zone and would not conform under any use that would be developed, um, within the I-zone. And as was previous. And as was previously noted, this lot exists as is. This is not the result of any proposed subdivision that's part of this application. Your wireless telecommunications ordinance, specifically Chapter 224-231, permits wireless telecommunications facilities as a conditional use on lands owned by the township or the M U A or any other public entity, and it lists specific conditions. The two immediate ones are the minimum lot size is five acres. We don't meet that. So we are requesting a D3 conditional use variance from that condition. The other condition talks about towers are limited to monopoles with guide, without guys, guide wires, and they must be designed to accommodate at least three carriers and can be up to a hundred and fifty feet in height. Previous testimony notes that the tower is designed for at least three carriers and has a height of a hundred and forty feet. Also in that section, you have several design standards that we have to meet, most of which this application addressed. The one most prominent that we're requesting relief from, it has to do with the fall zone, which is a hundred and fifty feet of the tire height, tower height, I'm sorry, from any adjoining lot line or non-apparent building. And as I'll go through my testimony, that some of that is a function of the size of the lot, but also in its location. So for a D3 conditional use variance, essentially, the use is permitted, subject to conditions. And obviously, since we're not meeting them, we have to address the criteria, which is the equivalent of what's called the Coventry Square case. The positive criteria is essentially addressed, and it's the negative criteria that we have to focus on. You know, in, in terms of what is, you know, that there's no substantial detriment to the public good or to the zone plan by requesting the, the variance for the minimum lot area and also the concern about the fall zone requirement. So first, we address no substantial detriment to the public good, and there are several factors that are considered in granting conditional use permits. You know, in terms of the closest residential zones, the R30 zone is located about two thousand feet northwest of here. There is a zone in Tom's River, the R200 zone, that's about eight hundred feet west. Yes, we do have the nearby residential unit, which concerns about that will be addressed in the context of the distance, the fall zone distance. But in terms of the section of the ordinance with regards to residential zone, we do meet that. The dis- the, the residence is separated by the Edison Avenue right of way, which is seventy-five feet. We also have about sixty-two feet from the tower base to the western lot line. And as previous testimony mentioned, that the, the structure, the residential structure is well over two hundred feet from the site. And the concern with the fall zone is that, that there is sufficient distance in the event there is a negative event in terms of the tower failure. But as is noted in testimony, these towers rarely fail in terms of collapsing from its base forward. They would crumple, they would bend in the middle. And they are designed in such a way that they would, obviously, they would have to meet structural standards and wireless, wireless telecommunications facilities have their own standards that have to be met with regards to the, with regards to the applicable codes. So there's adequate room to address concerns regarding fall issues. As, as you can see on the aerial, and there's substantial tree coverage and foliage when you drive by the immediate lot, there's many trees that already exist on the site. And one of the, one of the concerns that was noted in your board planner's letter, and is also noted in your ordinance, is concern about landscaping. And that would be to minimize the visual impact, particularly of equipment that would be located on the site. But you drive by the area where the, where the platform, where the base is going to be located with the tower, how it's set in. And on the plans, it does show that there's going to be a substantial amount of existing tree cover around the perimeter of the site. So it's my opinion that the existing conditions with regards to the existing trees and foliage do provide a substantial amount of coverage to minimize, minimize concerns about visual impacts. And the most obvious concern is visual impact from the residential, the residential lot, which is a substantial distance away and has, as you'll note on the, on the aerial, there's substantial tree cover between the site and the residential area. And the site tower will offer space to multiple carriers. It will fill a coverage gap. And in terms of site design features, is noted by your, by your board engineer that there is no need for stormwater management procedures, given the minimal amount of disturbance that occurs here. There's no substantial detriment to the zoning ordinance or master plan. It's an M U A property. It's permitted by conditional use. It meets the purpose and intent of the ordinance. Your ordinance lists several goals and objectives that are related to this particular ordinance, and I'll just go through a few of them. Encouraging location of towers on township-owned property where appropriate or in other non-residential areas. This is an M U A property in an industrial zone. Minimize the total number of towers throughout the community. The tower is proposed for multiple users and designed to fill a coverage gap. Encourages use, uses of towers to locate to the extent possible where adverse impact in the community is minimal. This is a zone where you have your more intense uses and for the most part, the surrounding area, it is of light industrial type, type of uses, and its location in terms of where it's set on the property and the existing tree cover will minimize concerns about impact. Also goes to minimizing visual impact in a heavily wooded area with vegetation providing substantial screening and avoiding potential damage to adjacent properties through engineering and careful sighting of towers. In the immediate area, there is a minimal amount of development, and given how the towers are designed, in the worst-case scenario, if something does happen, that the tower failure would not have a substantial impact on the, on the neighboring residents or on other neighboring properties in terms of damage. So in terms of the, in terms of the CTC3 criteria, I believe that we've addressed the negative criteria and that that addresses the request for the C3 variances, I'm sorry, the D3 variance is consistent with your ordinance. And that's my testimony.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Yes, I have. I will get that. Sure. I know there were several.
Some stuff.
Left some stuff for me. Let's see. I'll just start, let's see. I'll just go through this real quickly. Let me see. Page four, we go through the zoning, the, the deviations from the ordinance are listed. And I do believe that I covered that in testimony. We also, I also addressed the existing non-conforming conditions with regards to the lot bulk standards.
Why don't you just jump up to page ten?
You got it.
I think that would probably be best.
Okay.
Section six. I left most of that for you, the, starting at A.
Chairman, I, I'm, I've had, from my perspective, enough testimony from Mr. Moronsky. He, he hit the, the purposes of the re, of our local cellular communication ordinance. We don't want a proliferation of cell towers throughout the site. And to the extent that the fees that are paid to put a site are generated towards either the township of Jackson, M U A, residents ratepayers, as opposed to a private property owner. And they've shown a hardship as it relates to the site that was made available to them by the M U A. So those three points being made, I don't take any exception to Mr. Moronsky's testimony as it relates to the application.
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, questions, comments, information that you're about to present before the board to the applicant or to the professionals will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I'm sorry.
Can you please state your full name, spell your last, provide your address, please?
My name is Andrew Conlin, C O N L I N. I live at 53 Cardinal Drive. This is wondering how many, how much of the property is going to be clear cut? Or cut down to, developed on?
The lease area is twenty-five hundred square feet.
If you look to the right, you'll see that's the leasehold area from our plans. That's the, you could see the tree line there. See that squiggly line?
Oh, that's okay.
That's a, that's what it's going to end up looking like. So that's going to, everything else is going to be cleared out. It's going to interfere with that. The direction is to maintain as much of the rest of the lot as possible.
So is that going to just still be natural woodland, or are you going to replant stuff there?
It's going to be left in its natural state.
Oh, okay, great. All right, thanks. So ahead.
And just for, just for clarity, it's about six thousand five hundred square feet based on your limited disturbance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I will.
Chairman, before he does, one quick question. Sir, you, you meant, you mentioned, or you discussed the, the SEEK analysis because it's a D3, but you kind of glossed over the positive criteria. Can you go over that again?
Well, in a, in a Coventry Square case, the positive criteria, because the use is, is a permitted use, say for the conditions being met, the positive criteria is met.
No, that, that goes to the negative criteria.
No, 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 that's the positive. I went through the negative criteria, which was, which is the other portion of the D3 that I was required to address.
If I could take a stab at it, I think that what you're used to seeing perhaps is the D1 testimony regarding the use variances. And what we would do in that case, of course, cell towers are not inherently beneficial uses. But what we need to do is we need to show that the tower covers a significant gap in service, which is what Ms. Coles did. And when you do that, that assumes the inherently, it's not inherently beneficial.
No.
But the inherently beneficial test would be applied in a D1. And the positive criteria would be assumed carried by the fact that it covered the significant gap.
Is it fair to say the fact that there's an FCC license here would indicate that there's a general benefit to the general public as a result of that?
Well.
From a planning perspective.
From a planning, as much as I would love to agree to that, Supreme Court has actually said you have to show the gap with the FCC license. Waving your FCC license around at boards has been tried about mid-ten, fifteen years ago, and that's not enough. You need to show the gap with the FCC license, and that's what we did.
I thought the Supreme Court, a Supreme Court case also says that even though you have the FCC license, that satisfies one, one section of positive criteria, that there is still have to be shown a particular suitability. And that, I understand that's a D1 requirement.
That's a D, that's a D1 requirement. The particular suitability is shown by the filling of the gap, which I would cover in my summation, which I'm probably going to end up waving now since I'm talking about it with you, Mr. Hurley. But the, when you show that the gap is filled, it shows that the site is particularly suited for the use, which is filling that gap, making the seamless network in the area. Well, with that, I'm just going to thank the board for its time, and I'll rely on the testimony as provided in my comments to Mr. Hurley, which was the only additional point that I wanted to make. And everyone have a great eye. I hope you see fit to approve this application as modified by us here this evening.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I guess the one item that was on my mind is really the first prong of the negative criteria for the conditional use in that is, is there, is there a condition that we could impose? Or is one even needed that we would want to consider to make certain that there is no, no, no danger, no further health or safety issue to the public good in relation to that tower and the, the smaller footprint that that tower is in. They, they talked about the fall zone, but then what I didn't hear, and, and maybe I'm making more out of it, but not, it needs to be, but it's still on my mind, so I'm placing on the record. I mean, there's, there's an ordinance that gives you a calculation that the fall zone has got to be a hundred and fifty percent of, of some number of the height, which, which I believe would put the, would put the fall zone, if I find it right here, which require falls on a two hundred and ten feet. Whereas the monopole is approximately a hundred and eighty feet from this non-apparent building, this residential shed, and fifty feet from the right of way. And I'm reading from Mr. Peters' report at, at item five on page four. Graham Avenue is sixty-seven point six feet from the right-of-way line of Edison Avenue, with Paper Street fifty feet from the adjoining lot line and thirty-two point four feet from the adjoining lot line. Variance relief is required. The applicant has requested a variance for thirty-two point four feet. All right. There must be a rationale for that a hundred and fifty percent. And I don't know what the rationale is, but nonetheless, I'm concerned about it. But then, on the flip side of the coin, and I'm looking at the aerial photograph, there seems to be all vegetation around. So even with that thirty-two foot variance, what's the possibility that there's going to be some significant damage to the public good if that thing does collapse? We've, we've heard testimony that these things are fairly rigorous, that if they do, they're going to collapse midway. It's not as if though this thing is going to become airborne, which was a concern, but I'm, I understand the testimony that doesn't happen. And, and Mr. Hill may add a few things to help.
Sure.
Get over this hurdle.
Absolutely. When, it's important to note, when the wireless ordinance was originally written, and this is, this is, you see this in a lot of towns. They're written back when lattice towers, the three-legged lattice towers or four-legged lattice towers were popular. You see one right across the street from here, right? Loaded up carriers. It's about two hundred foot tall. What's right in front of it? You know, we have buildings, we have, I mean, we, it's, it's all over the place. That fall zone, it was, was, was po- it was in a lot of ordinances, and it was, it was because of the lattice towers. When lattice towers fall, some of them were even guided. They had guide wires to hold the lattice towers up as well, because there were flimsy structures. But when one of those guy wires would break, or a couple would break, that's when you started to see towers, these lattice towers fall. Lattice towers are, are an erector set of steel, bolted connections and so on. So when these lattice towers fell, they exploded. Pieces went everywhere, right? Because of the concern about lattice towers and, and the evolution of the industry, it's actually better to have these monopoles. You have, you have less surface area from a wind stability standpoint. You have, it's, it's easier to build the, the foundation systems. Usually have one large caisson foundation, if not multiple. You don't need guy wires. So the, and, and the testimony, the structural testimony is, is consistent with my experience with these, with these types of facilities. The straw example is perfect. I, I like that. I'm going to remember that one, too. You know, if you bend a straw over, you have a straw, you hold the bottom of it, you bend the top, it's going to fold somewhere in the middle, but it's going to fold. It doesn't fall. And that's the way these, that's the way these structures are designed. They're not designed to fail. But if and when they ever do, which I personally haven't experienced one, if and when they do, they tend to fail the, the middle to upper third point. All right. I'm not even aware of there, even after Superstorm Standing, any actual monopole towers failing. Even the ones that look like fake trees. Not to say, not to say one hasn't, but I'm not aware of any. Now, what, what, maybe as an added level of comfort, instead of the applicant just submitting his structural package to the construction official. um, instead of the applicant just submitting his structural package to the construction official, your condition could be he submits it to Ernie and I to review as part of resolution compliance to make sure it does meet all of our, all the current codes, um, and so on. So that's what I would suggest for an added level of comfort in a condition.
I like that idea. I just need a second to coordinate with Mr. Cottrell.
I guess while they're doing that, I'd also like to point out to the board, this is for the first applicant. This is for the construction of the facility and the first set of antenna. Any other carriers that want to locate on this tower have to come back in front of this board and they, and they would have to meet the same burden of proof. Um, and also provide uh, the same, provide an added level of security with new calculate, new structural calculations and so on.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. What we could do, that calculation is done uh, by a different consultant, as I'm sure you're aware. It's submitted with the construction drawings. What we would propose is uh, putting in the resolution of approval. And we will submit that to you at the appropriate time. Uh, but we would like to be able to begin the permitting process, which will trigger that uh, structural calculation. So can we submit it to you at the same time we submit it to the construction office?
Yeah, we, we can work, we can, we can figure that out behind the scenes, but that, that, that's, that's appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, as you've probably, I'm gonna preface the next comment with a comment before that, that under the Radiation Protection Act in New Jersey, uh, this board is not permitted to consider health issues regarding cell towers concerning uh, Sony board applications, as long as they comply with FCC standards. But I will point out to you that the trick for the cell tower is what I described before, the recycling of the low-power radio waves uh, between different sites. It's not the radio waves themselves. The radio waves are the same radio waves that have been in commercial use with your radio in your car and your baby monitor, which actually does not comply with FCC regulations. Is over the emission standard of FCC regulations, but this is like a fraction of 1%. So everyone's gonna be fine. It's, it's the radio waves themselves are uh, been in commercial use since the early 1900s.
I'd like to put forth an approval of this application as set forth with all the stipulations as set forth.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes, you have your head.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. Happy New Year.